We're returning to open session. We just had an executive session since six o'clock. The next item on the agenda was the high school advisors. However, I think they're going to come on June third. That will be their seniors. That will be their, their last time they graduate at the end of that week. But they have agreed to come on June third and we could say goodbye to them at that point, then give their final report. Next item would be the public forum. So is anyone, we have a public forum at this point and we also have a public forum at the end of the meeting. Does anyone wish to speak? The public forum at this stage? Anybody? Yes. So just give us your name and-
Sure. My name is Dan Master. I'm a parent of four students here in Watertown Public Schools. You know, I've been sort of paying a little bit of attention to some of the turf discussion in the Oval. It's my understanding that as a school committee, you've largely stayed out of it or stayed silent on it. I might be wrong on that, but that's my understanding. But I'm just here to ask you guys to be a voice for the kids, for, for the students and student athletes of Watertown. It seems to me that that would be the role of the school committee. And so that's what we are here to ask you to do.
Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in public forum? Yep, Michael.
Hello, Michael Collins. I'm speaking on behalf of the high school athletics coaches to the same topic, Phase Two renovation for Victory Field. In particular, we want to ask the school committee to strongly consider reopen the item of artificial turf as part of Phase Two renovation. As coaches and student athletes, we've come to the conclusion that it would be vital and essential to have that sort of a playing surface in order for us to continue with our programs. And so whatever it takes to get that in front of the school committee and then in turn in front of the town council for active consideration is what we're seeking. I thought there would be a larger group of us scheduled to be here, but perhaps will come towards the end of the public forum. Wanted to put that on the record. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I'll just say typically we don't have a conversation around public forum, but just say that, you know, that was an issue the school committee had as an agenda item several years ago. And it has since gone to the town. The town council has taken a position on that. And it's town property, the building, the grounds are town property. Certainly the schools are a major user, but it's a decision that's been made at the, at the town, town level. And so, I know-
Come back if you want.
Sure.
And the response we're getting from the town council is the reason they made the decision they did is because they did not get a signal from the school committee that it was important to have artificial turf.
Yeah, I understand that.
Which we feel is a bit of a rope-a-dope. And to proceed on a three-year-old record when it wasn't plain to the school committee that indeed their recommendation, thumbs up, thumbs down, would be important in that process is a bit of a turnaround.
Okay.
And the students are quite concerned.
Okay. Mark, you want to speak to it?
Typically, we don't speak to this, as you said. But this is not a school committee issue at this point. This is a town issue and the town has made a decision. They've already moved the design to the 25 percent phase through the Victory Field ad hoc committee that was created. I believe the only way you may be able to change this is by a petition process. And I'm not even saying it. The only way the council may review this is by a petition process that's laid out clearly in the town's charter. So that, I would suggest, I don't have the charter in front of me. I would say have someone look at the charter or I can look at the charter and if you want to contact me, I'll tell you what the process is. But that decision has been made, whether the school committee weighed in or not. And we've spent a significant amount of tax dollars to advance the recommendations of the ad hoc committee that was created.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Anyone else for public forum? Okay, I'll move on to, pardon?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Emma Fallon. I'm a freshman from Watertown High School and I play field hockey and lacrosse. And similar to what Coach was just saying, I came here to discuss the topic of turf in the Oval and why I think it would be the most appropriate and more efficient for the students who are a large population and part of what Watertown is. And I think that we nothing, we nothing but profit from having turf between late practices, sharing the field, not barely having time to do homework, going there after school, getting it all crammed in. It's, it's very hectic. And I think when we put that compared to having a nice green space where I think in Watertown, that we are a small town, we are very blessed to have other places with great green places for picnics and things like that. And I think that it's important that with Vic especially being an important part of the athletics and a big part of Watertown especially, that we incorporate the Oval into being more and having more space for students to do athletics.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I, I will just add, so just beyond what Mark Sideris, who's council president, I mean, there's discussions going on and have been happening and will continue to happen to try to maximize the use of all the fields. And, you know, whether, they don't have to be turf to try to kind of improve the, the quality of that field, to maximize the opportunities there and at other parks to try to make sure that we cover in the best way possible the, the needs for all the athletic teams. So those conversations are continuing. Okay. Next item on the agenda would be the teaching and learning showcase. The first one is the introduction of Erin Molton as the Hosmer Principal as of July one, two thousand nineteen. Dr. Galston.
Thank you very much. So I'm very pleased this evening to present to you and the full entire Watertown community, Ms. Erin Molton, who will be the Hosmer Elementary School Principal, beginning in the fall of next year, of two thousand nineteen. It was a very thorough interview process. We, we had a screening committee that screened applicants. Then we went and had site visits where all of the applicants came in that were selected to be finalists, came in and visited with our communities for almost a good part of a day. And throughout the process, it certainly became evident that Ms. Molton demonstrated a deep understanding of teaching, learning, and instructional leadership and would make an excellent addition to our leadership team and to the Hosmer community at, at large. Equally important to her educational leadership is that Ms. Molton is committed to fostering the social emotional development of all students within a very supportive school environment. So I think she is the, the full package for what we're looking for at the Hosmer. So in terms of Ms. Molton's past, she was the principal at the Prospect Hill Academy Charter School in Somerville for seven years. And that student body is very diverse with a substantial English learner population as well, which is really uniquely positions Ms. Molton for success as the principal of the Hosmer. Prior to that time at Prospect Hill Academy, she also held the position of vice principal and grade five teacher at Mother Caroline Academy in Dorchester. So currently, actually, Ms. Molton serves as one of the elementary math coaches. So I think many families across all three elementary schools have interfaced with Ms. Molton and many students. And so I think that we've had a chance to really get to know Erin and appreciate her deep level of commitment to Watertown, which I think is one of the things that we certainly wanted in our next principal. So we are very excited to have Ms. Molton join our leadership team, beginning this July for the leadership team, but then in September for the Hosmer community. I think one of the major transitions for Ms. Molton is changing her name from Mrs. Math to Ms. Principal. So we're going to have to figure out how that goes, but right now she is definitely known as Ms. Math. So thank you once again to all of the teachers and staff members and parents and students who participated in the process, especially those who served on the screening committee. And we are just very pleased to present tonight to Erin Molton.
Do you want to stand up and say a few words?
Sure. I actually just want to thank everyone. I'm so thrilled to be here. I've enjoyed my year this year. And I'm just really excited about all the good things that are to come at the Hosmer. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. We look forward to seeing you on a regular basis coming forward. Thank you. If I could introduce another item here, a quick agenda item at this point, we have someone coming, a new principal. We also have somebody leaving. And so I want, she, she looks out. So I just wanted to, to thank Renee. This will be her last meeting. Renee Gereo is moving on to, back to higher education, actually, at Berklee School of Music. And I want to thank her for all the work that she's done for us. And I have something for you. She's the first time that we've had somebody who has been at all the meetings, taken all the minutes, taken the notes, does all the minutes. And those of you that have followed it, we have sometimes struggled in the past to get all of our minutes up to date. And I think Renee has accomplished that task and then some. So we thank you very much for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the middle school and high school improvement plans. So I think, let me just say a word of preface to this. You know, the school improvement plan is in state law. Actually goes back, I'm pretty sure, to the nineteen ninety-three Education Reform Act. So every year, every school is to do a school improvement plan and they're to present it to the school committee. At one point in time, school committees were required to vote on them. We don't now, but it's still required that we review them and have that presentation. So we've been doing it for a number of years now. And we're excited to have the middle school and the high school today. At our next meeting will be the elementary schools. And I'm just asking, I'll go, the superintendent can do the introductions here, but I think it's particularly helpful for us to kind of see the highlights of kind of what are the, what are the kind of things that you're seeing that's going to be different in the coming year. So we look forward to hearing that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So one, one thing that I'd also like to add prior to starting with our middle school, school improvement plan, as everyone I think is well aware of the fact that we have put District Improvement Strategy in place. This is year one of basically a four-year plan and we're heading into the, the real meat of the three years of the District Improvement Strategy. So our leadership team has obviously been part of that, that creation of the District Improvement Strategy. But within their school improvement planning process, they are using that as the overarching direction of the, the school district and looking at how is it within their schools or what is it within their schools they're doing that supports that, that greater mission that we have as a school district. So you'll see that I think what they're putting forth is a three-year plan as well with yearly improvement strategies along the way. So that's what you're going to hear tonight are those overarching goals that we're going to be working towards for the next three years and then some of the initiatives in place to support that. So we'll start with Donna Martin, who's the principal of the middle school. And she has brought, I think, some members of her school improvements, I mean, our school council, yes?
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to, to Sasha Kiani Parent, who's my co-chair of site council, and Chris McDermott, grade six, world geography, who was on site council. And just I want to thank everybody on site council who, it was my first sort of experience with doing site council. We had a great group of parents and teachers. And we had some feisty and passionate discussions, but I think we came up with a great, really worked everything out. I think we came up with a great school improvement plan. So again, in the interest of sort of the highlights, so that's our site council, looking at the, the first objective, sort of develop and implement instructional practices designed to close and achieve, achievement gaps. So I think you'll see, and actually, I'm not going to skip ahead, but I'll give you a preview. The last slide says, is, as you know, we're a turnaround school. We're developing a turnaround plan right now. We're working with Schoolworks to look at all the factors of the school and develop a plan for moving forward. So the second meeting with Schoolworks is tomorrow, the second full day meeting. And we'll have the turnaround developed by the beginning of June. So once that's done, that will be incorporated in this and I can give you sort of an updated, more specific, I mean, this is pretty specific, but even a more updated specific school improvement plan with the, with the guidelines from Schoolworks and from the turnaround plan. So just, I'm not going to mention turnaround here, but just so you know, it's certainly on my, on my mind. So we, so one of the main things we want to do is close the achievement gaps. That's something that's been going on for a long time. It's looking at the MCAS data. You can see that we need to work on special education students and English language learners and just sort of their achievement. And so, oh, I'm sorry. So there's the first objective. So some of the things, some of the outcomes we'll be looking at, just really working in more inclusion, really developing the professional development for co-teaching, really looking to have fewer students in warning or needs improvement. And just really, so we started, you're going to see iReady sort of peppered throughout the school improvement plan. And you'll see it also probably a lot in the elementary schools next time. But we started, we started iReady with, we have three diagnostic assessments this year. The third one is coming up in a couple of weeks. And so the teachers have started to look at the data of iReady and work on it in small groups. We're not a hundred percent there yet, but that's sort of one of the focuses or folk I of the upcoming school improvement plan is really using data, using the data from iReady, using the data from Common Assessments to sort of drive curriculum and drive instruction. So stop me anytime if you have questions. So-
Let's, let's hold questions till the end.
Okay.
Okay, please. Be better.
Okay. And please just jump in if I'm, if I'm going too fast or anything. So the second objective, promoting curriculum instruction assessment practices that promote intellectual stretch and engaged learning for all students. So along with, oh, thank you. So, she's the best. Okay. So along with, you know, really making sure that we're addressing the needs of some of our struggling learners. We also want to make sure and challenge all of our learners and really meet our learners where they are. So that was one of the things we talked about a lot is just sort of driving up the rigor of all the classes and really making sure there's lots of differentiation. And I'm going to skip ahead to the sort of expected outcome. But sort of really making sure that there's lots of differentiation. We need to continue with more professional development on that and really sort of using formative assessments to see where the students are at in each class and then addressing the needs of each student in the class and really making sure there's a lot of student engagement. And they're able to sort of learn where they are, standards-based, really focus on the standards, working on this, making sure the standards are in the curriculum. Lots of project-based learning, inquiry-based learning. And we want to make sure sort of less teacher talk, more student talk, working in groups and really, you know, letting the students sort of learn from one another and work together. So the third objective, using technology and collaborative structures to enhance communication. So, I'm sorry, here we go. So some of the outcomes, so we have, you know, one of the successes, I sort of skipped over that slide, but one of the successes we had this year was the new, and everybody can say the new Watertown Public Schools website, which parents have really liked. They like how it translates. They like how accessible it is. Parents with different disabilities are really happy about it. They can really find all the information on it. I think we're getting better at really getting all the updated information on it. And then it also goes out to Facebook and it goes out to Twitter. So sort of whatever social media, I can't, anyway, site that people use, they're able to access it and find all the information coming out of the middle school. So, and we're just going to continue to work on that and seeing, we're also, you know, the teachers are working on Power Teacher Pro and really hoping to open the portal at least in some degree to parents in the fall or as we go into the winter. So just increasing that, that communication really, you know, as we do more iReady, just really making sure parents are informed and really sort of know where their students are. And also including the students in this and having students self-reflect on, on where they need to grow and what successes they've had moving forward. So mostly, you know, a lot of really looking at data and helping students help themselves. Okay. And the last one is fostering a healthy school environment. This is more sort of the social emotional. And again, we had some success with this, with the, with the later school start time this year. We implemented before-school programming where students could come early and they could go to the cafeteria and get a healthy breakfast. They can go to the library and get some extra help. They can go to the gym and run around. And it's, Chris can attest, there's, you know, I said dozens, it's somewhere between dozens and a hundred. I really, hundreds. I sort of debated, I don't know what's between those two, but anyway, scores of children.
And I think I've said before too, you can tell the difference when I'm often in the morning, one of the people out at the front desk, signing the kids in who go to the gym. And they'll come in and they will barely acknowledge your existence. They'll sign in and then they'll go to the gym, run around for like, not even that long, like twenty minutes. And they'll come out ready to go, energetic, saying hi. So it really, you can see a difference in the kids' attitude and manner after having that exercise in the morning. So.
Yep. And they really get going. So it opens at seven forty-five. And if, for whatever reason, at seven forty-six, someone's on at the front desk, they're sort of outside of the office. Was it, was there a gym today? I said, yes, just wait one minute. They'll be here, I promise. So Mr. Lampman sat at the desk for a week for us while Chris was in DC. So it was, you know, it's a, it's a great program. So we're going to sort of continue that, the social emotional, you know, just really continuing with the Kingian training, which, which the students really take part in. And just, and also just really making sure, using responsive classroom, sort of whatever SEL curriculum we go with, really looking at the unstructured areas of the school, the hallways and the cafeteria. That's sort of, as anyone who knows school knows, that's sort of where things happen sometimes or often. And so we're really trying to, to not have that happen. So, and I think it's, you know, I have seen improvements this year, but it's obviously in middle school. We always need to keep working on it and just really, you know, work on the children taking pride in their school, keeping it clean, keeping it safe, things like that. So we'll continue working on that. So that's, and there's my last turnaround. So that was kind of speedy, but we'll take whatever questions.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. And thank you for the, the parents and teachers coming along with you and all the work that you do with the, the site council. Oh, questions?
I just have a comment. I'm really appreciating the habits of mind that you've put in, especially around having students be more diligent around their own tidiness and cleanliness and owning their own space. Because I think the buy-in that you get and then you're teaching them something that will grow and, and about WHS hopefully and just continue on with that. So it's just, it's really nice to see that aspect of things being brought in and about giving students ownership of that space and then making it more of a community feel. So I just, I really appreciated that. Thank you.
Yeah, we installed cleaning stations in the cafeteria with brooms and stuff like that so they can go get it and sort of, you know, if they make a mess, which, well, Molton knows, if they make, if they make a mess, they can clean it up. I mean, that's sort of, you know, if you were at home, what would you do? So your dog isn't here to pick it up, so if someone else asks you, so.
I love that. Thank you.
Kendra?
Thank you so much, parents and teachers, for your help on this. I have a lot of questions, so John will cut me off at some point. One is, is about how are you doing things differently? So I know that there's been achievement gaps in the past and there's been some curriculum alignment struggles we've had at the middle school. So we do have iReady for the first time. How do you see teachers and how are you leading them to use data differently than they've used in the past so that it can change practice?
Sure.
So teachers are busy and having these coaches who are going to be coming will be, that was as, as the site council was very much hoping that those coaches would be there to assist in helping the teachers work with that data. Because ask the teachers to do all the work during the day and planning and managing and then figuring out the data and what if that's in our class, tell them that that happens. So this is what we're really hoping that these coaches are going to help provide that. And in addition to that is the training that now they will have their class and then they will get the, they will be able to then look at the data from iReady with their class in mind. Whereas when they first received it, they had no class. So they had data that they, you know, it wasn't data. It was just, you know, how to manipulate the system. And so now with actual students and with being able to look at the system to be able to now see, okay, what does my class look like? How can I then take some tools to help me to differentiate the teaching there? So we sort of jumped ahead in terms of having the system, but not all the training yet in place. So that is hoping to now be able to sort of, so this upcoming fifth grade class going to the sixth grade, a very different scenario than last year. But elementary school had a very strong iReady performance and enabled to pass it on. Sorry, I talked a lot.
Perfect. You were in all the meetings too.
Well, it was, it was a big point of discussion.
So they'll be able to use, using both iReady and MCAS. And you see them using- Oh, in a, in a new way.
Yes, in Common Assessments, really sort of, you know, working together to have Common Assessments and looking, and looking at student work and just sort of, you know, really taking the time to sort of delve into the data a little bit more and say, you know, calibrate their grading and say, you know, students seem to be struggling in this area and why. And so, and then really sort of informing instruction that way. We're also hoping, we haven't completely worked out the plan yet, but we're- We're also hoping, we haven't completely worked out the plan yet, but we're also hoping to sort of revamp the content support a little bit so that it can be maybe a little bit more flexible. So, we sort of, say you take all the students in Cluster Two who are in content support at one time, and there's 10 or 15 of them that need math extra help. So, they can go maybe to miss tomorrow's class and the other ones can come to Mr. McDermott's class and get literacy or get whatever extra content, you know, and support they need in history or anything like that. So, sort of being a little bit more flexible with our groupie and content support. I think that hasn't happened a lot recently, so we're just really looking very, sort of as we start the year, looking more mindfully at that, at those periods, which are a great opportunity for intervention.
Okay. So, you see, well, they have the time, because I know there's a lot of common planning time, they will have kind of the information they need, and then with coaches, you're seeing that'll be the last piece in terms of the guidance. Okay. In terms of, I know you mentioned formative assessments, so we have others, are there consistent formative assessments now between clusters?
I think it varies between classes, sort of which form of assessments are used. I think that's something else we can work on. The other thing that iReady has, not to talk about that all the time, but they have these sort of these standards mastery tests, which are just about 15, 20 minutes, depending on the standard. So, and there's two different versions. So, if teachers want, they can give standards mastery, this is ELE and math, give the standards mastery to see sort of where all the students are at and then, and use that as a formative assessment, like a more official form of assessment if they want, and then go from there. So, that's, that's, that's a starting point that they can use or they can develop their own. I mean, I, I mean, all the classes I'm in, you know, the majority of teachers all the time do a do now. So, and use that as sort of a jumping off point, you know, where, where are students, what do they need, how are they feeling as they come off a lesson from yesterday? And, and where do they, we need to go from there.
Okay. And then about aligning standards to curriculum, is there something that you're doing, you're thinking about or doing differently to better align the standards? What are the steps that you're taking as a site councilor, as, as teachers or leaders in this school?
Well, the teachers have been working hard all year with putting their lessons into Atlas and the, you know, aligning with the standards. So, I think they'll be looking at that work that they've done with the essential questions, the enduring understandings, and just really, you know, making sure that there, everything's matched up, standards, and they're, and they're teaching to those as they sort of perfect their pacing guides. And Mr. McDermott gets a whole new curriculum next year.
That's right.
It's also a good opportunity too for like, as you were saying, for like the formative assessments. We have this opportunity to kind of get a new curriculum and kind of start, not from scratch, but really have the opportunity to think about, well, how can we take the good things that we did with our previous curriculum and, and make them better in this new curriculum? And not just in social studies, because since in the middle school, the English and social studies is often closely connected, it actually allows us to relook at the English curriculum as well and including better formative assessments and aligning, aligning the lessons better to the standards. So, I think it's a good opportunity, but the change is coming.
Okay, great. You mentioned the parent portal. I was wondering, when do you think that will be available to parents? I know we've, we've sort of have it, but not rolled out properly yet.
I'm not sure, Dr. Goldston might be better. Maybe she's mad that I brought it up, but, but I.
You going to speak, good?
So, so what I can say is that one, is two, two steps to this, one of which is reintroducing parents to the, to the portal. So, one thing we have to do, we're, we're hoping to do it before even the end of the year, is to make sure that all parents can log in, you know, can at least have some basic navigation direction, because then next year, when we start to, you know, slowly open up the portal, we want to make sure the parents are ready to, to access it.
Yep.
You know, this year was a big year, and I, I talked about this at the beginning of the year, to have our teachers really learn Power Teacher Pro, which is the online gradebook. We provided them with, with ongoing training and support throughout the year. I think that, you know, we're probably 80% there. I still think we have some work to do in terms of the comfort level of teachers with the program, because the last thing we need to do is open up the parent portal and have teachers not feel really comfortable with what they're posting and then maybe hold back. So, we're still working through that. No matter what, you know, we will gradually release information into the portal over the course of the year, that is the intention. But I think that, I was a little bit more optimistic or just had a different, I thought it might be quicker to get to that point of comfort for the, the teachers, but I think I have to recognize that the teachers need as much time to do it right than to do it quickly and then have already not happy with the result. One, and I'm not going to, this is their, their time, but one other thing that, that it's interesting, is I spent a lot of time learning this year about, you know, how much is too much and how much is not enough, because there's actually some pretty growing research about the on, ongoing on-demand grades that teachers are accessing, I mean, I'm sorry, that students are accessing. So, I think there has to be, it's almost like a, again, how much is too much and how much is not enough. So, I think we need to come up with a sense of whether it's like every two weeks or whether, what it might be, but every day is actually very disruptive for, for kids. So, we're still, we're, we're getting there, but that is absolutely still our goal for next year, to open up the portal.
All right. All right, one more question in this, I'll call it, I promise, almost done. All right. You mentioned PD of our student engagement. So, what does that look like? I just don't, in execution, what does it look like?
I think just sort of, you know, really making, like, sort of making sure there's less, sort of what I said, less teacher talk, more student talk, making sure that they are engaged. So, just sort of professional development around, how do you, I, I, you know, as a teacher, sometimes it's hard to release the talking to the students, because you worry about classroom management and you worry about sort of, is everybody engaged with the curriculum, is everybody doing what they need to do? So, just sort of, might be sort of like a management, professional development, classroom management, or, or sort of a differentiation, but just really make, so it's sort of everything all-encompassed to make sure they're engaged with the curriculum. So, I, so I, that sentence is maybe a little bit vague, but that's.
Well, one of the things you mentioned too is about, over the past few years, we've had a big push for PBL, professional development, object-based learning.
Oh.
Sorry. I've been able to attend some PD on that, and one of the biggest things you'll see in terms of student engagement is if you make a project that's really authentic, something that kids really see that there's a point to what they're doing, not just the grade that they're trying to receive.
Yep.
You see a difference in the engagement of the students in the class. So, getting that kind of professional development on how to build those units, how to make them authentic, so that kids really see that, you know, they're doing something with their learning is important for that kind of stuff.
That makes sense, thank you.
I'll add one more, was in math class, where you have learning at so many different levels and that the idea that the instruction is maybe given, I mean, of course, every day might be a little different, but that the instruction time would be more of a smaller piece of the time and then allowing for the differentiation to be on, depending on where kids are at. And, you know, if you've got a population that's ready to move on, that you would have some sort of a, you would have tools in your toolkit to be able to help those kids move on, where then you would be able to then support the kids who need additional support. So, that was the idea around some of the, the training.
Okay, great. Thank you. My only last comment is, I know I asked a lot of questions about data, it's not, because data's interesting, it's, it's only as good as how it's used to support kids' needs. So, I hope that's clear that I, I'm only interested in how we can, you know, push the district forward, it's not data for data's sake, so, thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments from, yes?
Kendra covered most of them.
Okay.
But I do have a couple of questions. The morning program, I love that idea. There has been thoughts about bringing in like more of a structured, instead of just like an open gym? Have you thought about like bringing in like, I don't know, morning yoga class for some kids that might be interested in that or other things like that? Or even like a hygiene class for some.
We could use that in the spring, yeah.
Yeah. I know, just thoughts. I mean, this would obviously be towards Joe and the wellness thing, but just thoughts of that would be kind of great for some of our students. And then my other question, kind of more of a concern, so how do you manage the unstructured areas of the school? So, hallways and cafeterias, but I also know there's a lot of learning done in the hallways with groups, like on cellphones and things, and a lot of times the kids are in trouble because they're often caught on their phone doing something they're not supposed to, but yet it's a cool project that we want them to do. So, how do you plan maybe to tighten up the reins on that?
Well, I would say during the passing times, so we actually have a new system in place, the zones, so everyone has a different zone, so different teachers sort of are manning different zones. It's a lot of zone competition, so it's pretty good. So, so that's working out well. But I agree with you in terms of the, I mean, one of the things I noticed the first day I walked through the doors of Watertown Middle School for my site visit, was all the students working in all different areas. And I think the cellphones are, can be a problem. So, I think that is something that, that we need to address and maybe tighten up a little more. The teachers do excellent projects or students do excellent projects assigned by the teachers, making movies, making PowerPoints, taking pictures, really, you know, I've been interviewed a number of different times about different things and film, doing silly things and all sorts of things, which I'm hoping doesn't wind up anywhere. But, 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 you know, so that's all great. So, I think it's part of this sort of one-to-one initiative, you know, we have the Chromebooks and everybody has a cellphone. How do you, you know, where's the fine line of reining in and making sure they're using it appropriately? So, I think that's something that, that we're going to have to address and continue to address, absolutely.
But to comment, I mean, I think that the way that the school has responded to when a student sort of steps out, and I think it's great, because it quickly elevates to students that, that everybody will know when you step out, because it is a, it's a big deal. So, I think if we can continue that hopefully and then not take away so much of a creative piece of it, but it's about exactly, no doubt, somebody will push the button.
Other questions, comments? Yes, Lindsay?
Kendra, you did cover most of. So, my only question was just about, I know that we have a really successful coaching model, K to five, and you alluded to just a little bit how the coaches will help with data, but I know that they're, what else they're capable of, and so a lot of this PD, I think you're talking about, in terms of differentiation and in-class making classes, students, it's going to come from the coaches. And because you just speak to how you expect some of these things to be accomplished by the coaches other than just data support?
So, yes, and one of the, I'll be talking to Ms. Moulton over here and some of the other coaches. I mean, they did do, you know, an excellent job at the elementary school. I've actually not been fortunate enough to work in a school with coaches, so I'm super excited to have them come in. The, when we did our full professional day on March 6th, I think, we had the four elementary coaches working with different groups of teachers. The teachers were very happy, they were excellent working with the teachers. So, I think just learning from the elementary sort of all, and I think it's a little bit of an adjustment, because it's, you know, so for the teachers knowing that everyone is in unit A, everyone's, it's not evaluative, it's everyone helping each other and working together and really being very collaborative and collegial. So, I think there probably will be a little bit of adjustment as it starts, but I think once everybody gets used to one another, that it's just going to be very, you know, helping with lessons, or I have, I want to teach this, do you have any ideas of how I'm going to teach this? This group of students is really struggling, how am I going to work with this group of students in this class that has all these other students? So, I think it's just going to be sort of, as the trust builds, really working, you know, they'll be working and depending on one another. And I'm, my guess is by the end of the year, we'll be wanting more than two.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Eileen?
So, I'm very interested in the idea that when you have more, less teacher talk time and more student engagement time, that it shouldn't just be measured by percentage of time, it's the quality of what the students are doing. And the one thing, I would just say, I love all these different projects with the new media and stuff, but I don't want to get away from the fact that kids need to learn to write. And I don't think they do enough writing. And so, I'm hoping that some of the, that writing can be presented in an engaging way, and I don't want to lose that. I'm sure you have the same thought.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. It looks like an, you know, exciting year between coaches and iReady and common planning time and social, emotional, there's a lot of good ideas here and look forward to hearing how they come out.
Thanks, and thank you for supporting the coaches and everything, all the other budgetary, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, thank you. Next would be the high school.
Excuse me, can I just have some comments about the middle school turnaround plan? I apologize in late.
Well, we have public forum later.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. Thank you for having us here tonight. I will try to do a quick romp through our school improvement plan too. I know you have the whole school improvement plan, I'm between these glasses and not, sorry. And I'll just do the highlights of it here, just for the, and you can see all, oh, my members should come up. I have a bunch of my members here tonight. Laura Tondo, Joel Lantman, Dasmian Dyke, Ann Walters, and David Stokes. So, it's a good chunk of the, the team is here tonight. And we have worked all year long on this, and I think we have meetings yet to go in spite of the fact that we are presenting tonight. So, over the course of the year, we had a few great accomplishments. We formed teams of staff to continue to work on our NEASC projects, which are really valuable to us, because it causes us to look at and reexamine some of the things that we've taken just as part of routine in the past. So, we have done that. We sent our two-year progress report, it's hard to believe it's been two years, but we sent our two-year report in, and I know I gave you copies. We engaged in a great deal of professional development, and a lot of the focus of that was understanding by design. And I tallied up quickly over 15 hours between presenters and department meeting time, and I know that more time than that took place in common planning and, and times like that. And then began the mapping process into Atlas. Atlas is just a place that houses all of our curriculum, so it sets up the format for us, the teachers and their department heads work together to get that all organized the way that that is, and they put it in. I'll talk a little bit more about the UBD in a bit. We expanded co-teaching as an inclusion model in math, science, and social studies, is going well, and we're growing in our skill in that area. We really ramped up our leadership opportunities for students. They spoke at opening day with Dr. Goldston. They have led a couple of roundtables at faculty meetings. They've attended MIAA, National Honor Society, Massachusetts Partner for Youth, leadership summits, where they have been active participants and brought back more ideas. And Emma Fallon, who got up and talked before, joined us at the MSBA Design Summit. So, we're including students in very important things, and their input is like great. And we implemented the later starter time, start time that I know we've talked about. So, our first school improvement objective was, for next year will be to implement and evaluate the new master schedule. So, we are in the beginnings of that process right now. Everybody has done all their course selections, we're setting up the, the structure of that in Power School, and over the spring, summer, we will program it and populate it. We'll take a look as we go along, but we'll take a hard look in the winter to see, how did that go? Did we get students in the places that they needed to go? Did it actually make it easier for us to schedule students? And then make any adjustments that we might need to do, and then the following year, start again with the process. The several things that were important about what we're doing in that is we rotated the schedule. Everybody's best time of the day might be a different time of the day, and now they get to get that class at a different time of the day, so that they can always have a chance to be in their best place at the best time of day for them. We have longer blocks available for longer learning experiences, and already that's been a conversation that might free up some of the constraints on the schedule, whereas people used to say, well, I can only have that class period one and four, because I need to start the lab before school, or I need to go all the way through lunch. Now that there's the long block to plan around it, they don't have to constrain the schedule that way. So, that's already a, a plus. We did manage to make accommodations for our traveling teachers, so it doesn't fully rotate, but mostly rotates. And we put all of our three big music programs, band, orchestra, and chorus, all in the same block, and we did that deliberately. They're singletons, they're deliberately singletons, because you don't want band without your trumpets or orchestra without your cellos. This way, musical people are often multi-musically talented, and it was hard for them to get two singletons in their schedule, band and chorus, or orchestra and chorus.[1680.47] This way, they can plan for a day of the week where those students who are in band or orchestra can join the chorus so that they can be part of it. Right now, they've had to default to the after-school program if they couldn't get both in their schedule, which very few would be able to get two singletons like that in their schedule. So we're excited about that. We think that's going to work well. Early evidence of the change will be that the long blocks are utilized. I already see the impact on the schedule as being positive, and that music students might be able to engage in more than one music course. Objective two is complete our understanding by design restructured curriculum. I know Donna talked about that. That's a district-wide initiative. And there's a lot of steps that go into that. We have spent a lot of time with, but basically, the UBD design process is beginning with the end in mind. What do you want students to be able to do, and how will you know if they've done it? And then how do you design the lessons so that they can reach those goals? So it starts with the end and works backwards. How we, what do you want them to know and do? How do you assess if they know and, if they do know it? And then what kind of lessons do you design around that? So that's the basic outline of it. We also have a special progress report due to NEASC in December of this year, which we will do. And part of that is, they ask you to take a fresh look at your mission statement, your core values, and say, are these really what work for us still? They were created probably seven years ago now. And what would you change if that's not what meets what you're doing right now? And we actually are having some pretty robust conversations at staff meetings about how we want that to look. We've broken down into groups and teams are working on that. And some things may stay the same, but I think most of them are going to be impacted by the work that we're doing. And we're in the middle of that process, so I don't have an outcome yet. But early evidence of change is that we're going to start loading all of our curriculum into the Atlas house. And we will submit our progress report on time. The third objective is to improve and enhance family and community engagement. And this one had two goals, and to expand social-emotional learning programming at the high school. So for improving family engagement, some of the things that we're going to try to do is we're going to try piloting a late afternoon conference time. We can't really do the early release, but we could try for a slightly different time of day. We have two conferences in the fall, two conferences in the spring. If we had one that was on the earlier side, one that was on the later side, we might scoop in more people's availability. Where we will begin the process of opening Power Teacher Pro as part of the district in the timeline. That might be a little ambitious there to say fall of 2019, but it'll begin in fall of 2019. We're also going to, we have a committee working on, at the high school, looking at how we can expand social-emotional learning at the school. They are, we also have a committee that works on our advisory curriculum. So that's one of the things they've been charged with, is how can they integrate more of that into the advisory curriculum? We're also going to have a group of professional learning team, try to pilot integration of social-emotional learning directly into the classroom to see what strategies they can use and share with other teachers so that we can do that. We'll see how that goes this year. And they're going to continue to explore other opportunities and programs. They're looking at a lot of things right now. One of the things they have on their wish list for next year is to have a whole school community building event that involves teachers, students, and maybe parents, too. So that's in the very baby stages of being thought about, but it's on their, their agenda for, for talking. So I think the others are pretty obvious. And school improvement plan, objective four, is to work with the district and MSBA on the high school building and process, and to maintain existing, the existing building to support current students because we still have students in that building while we're building this building. So we have some milestones. In the very near future is updating the educational program for MSBA, holding community engagement meetings, holding design workshops. We went to one that they had done as kind of a demo for us earlier, and that, that was, that was kind of a, a way to open your mind to different thinking, not what you're just used to in terms of design of a building. So we're hoping that that can get scaled up. And then at the end of this process, this first process, the building committee will really run this, but we will, you know, play a part in it wherever we can. They will develop and submit preferred schematics and estimated costs. That's on the broad brush level to MSBA, probably by a year from this summer, sometime around there. At that point, then, some decision is made about a big idea as to where we're going. And then the real detailed design summits come into place in the next phase of this process. In the meantime, we're going to keep up the building. We're going to continue to do all our preventive maintenance protocols. We're going to continue to repair and replace anything that gets broken. And we're going to continue to invest in up-to-date technology and equipment, especially if we can say that that is portable to whatever our future building solution is. But we're not going to shortchange our students with the idea that four years from now we'll have a different building. We're going to continue to keep everything up for them now because they are our students today. So the expected outcome here is that the feasibility phase of the high school building project will be successfully completed within the year. And the early evidence of change is that we will have done all the submittals to SBA that we needed to do. So that was the fast romp through it. Oh, I turned it off. I didn't mean to do that.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you to the people behind who are, have done all their work at the site council. Thank you. Questions from the school committee? Lindsay.
Hi. I had one question about the, the new schedule and sort of teacher adjustment to the schedule, what kind of things they'll be doing. I know that I get, the middle school, for instance, they're getting coaches and things like that. And in some classes, maybe you're already in need of longer blocks. And so I'm just wondering what kind of plans there are for helping teachers use those longer blocks to do student-centered inquiry-based things rather than sort of more of the same if they haven't been doing that in the past?
So we did bring in a couple of times some professional development around ideas, and the last one brought actually a huge cachet of suggestions for that and links to a million different things where they could find resources for that. They're talking about it in their department meetings and, and planning for it.
Kevin, any question? Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll just take your role this time. My other question was about the, the sort of start of the SEL team in curriculum. Are they going to be looking to adopt a program or develop their own throughout the time? I'm just not, I was kind of unclear about what the plan was for that.
So they're not sure where they're going to go with that.
Okay.
So far this year, they kind of assessed where do they feel our biggest holes were? And they're looking at that right now. Not as easy to adopt the whole program at a high school, so they were kind of looking how they could infuse it in various different places and kind of narrow down their focus for the first year.
Okay, great. And then the only other question I had was about looking at the new schedule. It, I'm just not sure if it was looking to reevaluate it in spring 2020 or spring 2021. In the slide, it said 2021, but I didn't know if it meant next spring for the following?
Oh.
It's like next spring or spring 2020.
Maybe I typed that wrong.
I just wasn't, I was just curious about the cycle review if it was like a whole year of class.
In the winter, we'll look at it and then begin the schedule for the following year with, I don't think there would be significant things, but there could be like...
Right, I just wasn't sure if you guys were trying to do like a year and a half before you reviewed or if it was like up to...
No, 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 I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Kendra? Amy, do you have?
No.
No? Okay.
I do, I can go after you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Question about the late afternoon conferences, just wondering, is that, what was the problem that you were looking to solve with that?
We're looking to see if there was more interest if we had a variety of times that we could have these conferences. We normally have them 6:30 to 8:30 at night. Some people work. If we had one of the days 4:30 to 6:30, and the other day 6:30 to 8:30, we might make it available to more people, that's all.
Is it something that you struggle with to get parents there?
More in the spring than in the fall, but I bet that's true at all of the ways.
And my last question is just, I'm not really part of this, but this has really been the first year with PSATs and I-ready. And I'm just interested to hear your thoughts on how you felt like, or if that has helped teachers better support kids.
So it definitely has given us more data points. And we already had MCAS data, right? And we already had Common Assessment Data. And we already had academic merit in social studies in English, which is another tool that we have for, so this was two more data points. The, I had a meeting recently with the coordinators, and they said that they are able to disaggregate it by student so that they can give the next year's teachers that, all of those data points on the students that they have in front of them. So that just helps pinpoint weaknesses. They looked for places where the data points didn't seem to agree with each other and tried to figure out what the, what the fluctuations were. If one type of assessment ended up showing something that the others didn't, and tried to use it all. So they've really done a lot of work on mapping it out and, and sharing it with teachers so that they can use it specifically with the students in front of them.
Other questions or comments?
I absolutely love the idea of the leadership opportunities. And I know that you mentioned you had a student go to one of the meetings on the school buildings. Will you have more opportunities for more students to be involved in that?
I hope so, because that was so successful.
Yeah, cool. I love that idea, so thank you, that's great.
Especially at the high school level. We try to hear the student voice more and more because they are young adults, and it's their education, and they're articulate enough to tell you what they need.
Yes, Eileen.
Want to give a compliment, starting with the administration, then running through the faculty and staff of the high school and the middle school, which is, we put many years into planning whether we need to change school times, start and stop. There were a lot of moving parts, and it just happened fairly seamlessly, which involved a lot of people being more flexible about things that had been established for many years. So I think that was really well done. And I wonder if, just anecdotally, you have any feeling about whether that has improved student performance and ability to be at school on time, et cetera?
Well, we double-whammyed the being in school on time. And we changed tardies from adding up to be absences to tardies to immediate 30-minute sessions after school. So it's hard to say which one of those helped the tardies more, but definitely tardies are down. Attendance and performance, I think so. They're up, ready to go at 8:30. I think they did struggle at the earlier hours, although many of our students show up early to get going anyway.
Well, my congratulations to everyone on how it just happened and all the fears were not realized. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? One, one, thank you for the presentation. One comment I would make at the end in your last objective is the educational program for MSBA. And I just, that actually kind of dovetails with our next presentation because, you know, I do think that in this coming year, particularly in the fall, it's going to be an important task for the, the high school and the broader community as we enter this feasibility study for a new building. The idea of, you know, what, first thing the MSBA wants us to do, or one of the first things is to, you know, what, what kind of educational program are you going to have in your building? And I think there's a lot of discussion, some of it at that design summit, for example, of kind of rethinking a little bit about how we do some of the, the teaching and learning in, in the building. And that's a very important conversation. And I think that, again, our next speakers are going to kind of address that as well. But I think that's important and exciting for the high school and for the whole community.
It is exciting.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you to all the rest of people helping out. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a report from, on the vocational, technical, and career education opportunities. And Dr. Goldston, maybe you want to introduce?
Yes, absolutely. I will, just in case you would prefer just to have it hard, that's the presentation. Sometimes, I think, seeing it from afar is, is a little challenging for the school committee. So just as a way of background, if you recall back in the fall, we had a very robust conversation around Minuteman and whether or not the school, not the school department, but the, the community should consider becoming a member of Minuteman. And it was the will of the, the committee, and I think just generally from conversations amongst the school department, that that was not a direction that we wanted to go in. But additionally, I said at that point in time that we would explore many options for our students in terms of vocational, career, and technical education. So we have spent a healthy amount of time over the last several months really examining the options. And what I think started as just simply some solutions that might be available for the students who are going to Minuteman, I think, evolved into a greater examination of all of the opportunities that we have for all of our students at the high school level in terms of making deeper connections with their futures. So, you know, that being said, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, the Minuteman thoughts, and then I'm going to hand it over to a few folks from the high school as well as our digital-ready partners. And, but I did, I wanted to say that, you know, for probably, you know, decades, well, definitely for decades now, Minuteman has been certainly the direction that most of our, our children have gone in in terms of vocational, technical education. But I think that that, and it made all the sense in the world. But I think over the last couple of years, for many reasons, and none of which wouldn't, I'd be remiss not including the, the increase in the capital fee and the tuition and the cost for special education, you know, increasing our student expenses dramatically in terms of like $8,000 at a minimum for students. It, it really helped us to think about examining the options. And I think it's important for the community to realize that, that Minuteman is, is not technically the only option for our students. We're not members of the Minuteman Regional Technical High School. And there are, you know, our students can go actually to any vocational, technical high school that they so choose. I think that they've never really thought about that there are other possibilities out there. So we, we did a little exploration in terms of looking at, at programs that our students would be able to attend, one of which we took a drive to Medford, and we saw the Medford Comprehensive High School, which includes the Vocational/Technical Program. We know that Waltham is building a new high school, it's going to have up to 15 shops in it. So that's another option that we have for our students. There are just, I think our point is there are many, many options to our students, but most important, I think, is the, the realization that we have great options within our own high school. So we're not going to meet the needs of every child, but I think we can meet the needs of many of the children who might be looking at, at other alternatives. And perhaps that's because we haven't made it clear or explicit the opportunities that are available within our high schools and/or we haven't creatively thought as to how it is that we, we bring together the connections within our own high school to provide pathways for kids to their futures. So serendipity, I guess, hit. We were approached by Digital Ready, which is, today we have Dr. Sarah Cherry Rice and Dr. Kerry Donahue, who, this is their organization, and their organization is basically meant to help high schools think about a little bit of the redesign process and how it is that we can best prepare our students for, for future careers. So they came to us, they said we'd like to do a feasibility study around what's possible given your assets, given your programs, given your staff, what your community interests are, what your community availability is. And it happened right at the same time that we were doing this exploration, so we said, yes, please, do so. So they're here this evening to provide an overview of what they, what they found in this mini-study, which is fantastic, and I think it's going to help us when we really determine, not just through the building process, but just what we want for our high school students for their future. So I'm going to hand it over to Kerry Donahue to provide us, walk us through the process and the study and talk about some of the findings. And Laura Alderson Rotundo is also going to provide us information about specifically what we could do to offer either Chapter 74 programming or an innovative pathway within our schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Goldston, and thank you so much to Shirley and Laura, who have been awesome partners as we pursued this study. And then also, I interviewed some of you for the study on the school committee, and then was able to talk to students and teachers at Watertown High School and also other community members. And I think one thing I definitely want to come across in our presentation today is just how much opportunity and optimism there is about what Watertown High School can provide. And that's not just a new, exceptional, exciting, physical space, but also a new learning space for students. And there's a real opportunity for the community to come together to create that. And that is really exciting and potentially really rare as well. So I'm excited to share with you a little bit about what we learned. I'll try to hit like some of the key findings. There's a longer report that you have access to, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. As a little bit of background, just to frame the conversation, I want to just highlight that we, as many of us all know, that we are living in a world where often what's happening outside of the high school is transforming very rapidly, and that means the demands our students are going to face when they get into college, when they get into their careers, are really changing, both in terms of like technical skills, like do my students need to be able to code to compete? Well, the answer might be yes. One in four jobs will require some computer science skills here in Massachusetts. But it's not just about technical skills, it's also about social-emotional skills, the ability to appreciate diverse perspectives, the ability to be adaptable and change, the ability to be creative is, has a huge premium on it. And so we're seeing these major skill shifts, and sometimes the pace of change at the high school can kind of not keep pace with that. But at the same time, there's a huge opportunity to rethink what we're doing within the high school and how we better connect our students' experiences to what is happening in the world outside. And we really think that you can use your community by knowing its assets really well, you can build those connections for your students. So what, recent article in the New York Times, and it's tied to a book, talks about, "High School Doesn't Have to Be Boring." The Gallup Organization polls every year what students think of their schools, and high schoolers uniformly say, "School is boring." That doesn't mean that that's what your students here say, but that's the average across the country, is that students think high school is boring, and that's come, that increases over the time from their, from their time in elementary school to high school. So it's really unfortunate because there's also amazing things happening in high schools, and that's what these particular researchers found as they spent six years digging in to high schools, was like, what was going on in debate and chorus and drama? And then in some classrooms, was actually really exciting, and kids were really engaged. So the takeaway is, high school does not have to be boring. And so as Dr. Goldston spoke to, that is our, sort of our motivating, is like, how do we make high school relevant? How do we make it challenging for our kids so they're set up to succeed in the world? And we partnered specifically with Watertown Public Schools to think about, how might they answer some... answer some of those questions, and what are the options? And luckily, this was something that your community was already thinking about. And so, we try, we aimed to answer four different questions, and this was through a needs assessment, a labor market analysis, and a community asset map. The questions that we were asking were, had to do with, one, what are the needs of students, families, and community members that may be unmet by the current high school? And the second one was, what, what is happening out in the labor market in terms of the skills and competencies that are valued, that kids need to be prepared for going into college, as well as into their careers? And then the second, the third piece was this community asset map, which I think we really just scratched the surface of. And in all of these, I think we just made an initial foray into each of these assessments, which could be much deeper and go on for much longer. This was kind of like an abbreviated process. But the community asset map really looks at, within the school system, what are the assets that could be deployed to support you all in thinking about new programs or redesign programs? It also thinks about what are the resources in the external environment, so what's happening in the state right now, what is happening in our local community that could support our schools in terms of industries coming in, new people coming in, new ideas or nonprofits? So, these are all become components that inform what we think about different options for how the high school might redesign either aspects of its high school, or add new programs or pathways for students. So, I'll switch to what the study actually found. I think that this has already come up in tonight's meeting, as you heard folks from the middle school talk about, there's a need to make learning really relevant for our kids, there's a need to make it authentic and connected to them. When we do projects, it makes a difference when kids really understand like what the content they're learning, like where it actually happens out in the world, so they can make sense of it. And so, we identified that and heard that from students, teachers, and community members. And that's not to say there aren't constraints that people face in making, executing this idea, and that's really the hardest part. But there was definitely a desire to have more learning that is authentic, that is connected to their world, and that cuts across disciplines. So, why would it be that in English, and you're studying Macbeth in this example, that the student spoke to really stuck out to her? The reason why she remembered it was because, one, it was connected to her interests when she was studying Macbeth, and, two, she was able to do research in history and sort of place the book in an actual time period connected to actual people. And so, there are these, sometimes we can get stuck in disciplines or departments and forget that there's actually a ton of connection across that. And in the real world, we don't operate just in, I am writing right now, I am purely on English mode. Where in our brains, we're making connections across disciplines. Another major finding of the study was there's, there were so many opportunities here specifically in Watertown for students to gain access to experiences in the high-wage, high-demand fields that are really valued in the Massachusetts labor market and in the Boston, greater Boston labor market, specifically tied to the digital economy, and I would also say the life sciences. I think what's interesting about this particular town is just how many, how much is happening sort of economically, and I don't have to tell you that because you're residents here, but there's just an opportunity for all of those new industries that are coming in to make sure that your students are actually part of the talent pipeline for those industries, and that they're getting exposure to careers, which does, may look like an internship, but it could look like doing a client project for an industry partner and getting real feedback from industry on their work. The third core finding was that there's really strong internal capacity. So, when you think about your local school system, this is a place that is ready and has the capacity, has already sort of some of these ideas around authentic learning or project-based learning, connecting students to experiences outside of the high school. Like, there's already been some capacity built in terms of training and investments that you've made. So, that's really exciting. And then I would say externally, there's a huge number of partners who could be brought in very strategically to support redesign in different ways. So, depending on what you want to build, you should think about who are all the partners that we might line up that could be part of the design process and then be leveraged to actually support the execution of new programs. We also identified some challenges. One of these, I think, these aren't things that you, they're not meant to be like things that should prevent you from thinking differently, it's just things that you will keep coming up, that people will reference when they're, they're getting excited about a new vision for high school, but then they'll say, oh, but the school is so small. So, these are some of the constraints that people spoke to. One is just, the small school size is a huge asset, because there's a really strong community. And so, that's something that is really valuable, especially at the high school, for kids to feel known. The challenge with it is that anytime you add new programs, you're sort of dealing now with, you're spreading your enrollment across a larger number of programs, and yet you really have to think about, what's our overall vision, what's our goals for our kids, because we may have to take away programs in order to make sure that what you're doing is financially sustainable. Another challenge that came up had to do with like really deeply understanding the demand from students and families, and this comes through a process. I think what we did was just like a little tiny, tiny dipstick into some comments that people made about what they want and need. More study would need to be done on that front, so really looking at historical course-taking patterns, data from student surveys, family surveys, conducting focus groups, really trying to get as much, many people in the community to participate as possible. A second, a third challenge that we heard was just this support for teachers to collaborate and design learning experiences. And I think this has bubbled up a little bit tonight, Ray, when you're talking about, oh, you have a long block now, are teachers prepared to take advantage of that? I think that that is something we definitely heard from teachers, that there's this feeling like, we want to collaborate, we professionally really value collaboration with our peers. We also really value these experiences we've had, where we've designed a unique learning experience, where the students were super engaged. I love taking my kids to Ananta Pharmaceuticals, was something a teacher said. But preparing for those types of experiences requires more time than may even be built in the existing schedule. So, that was something that came up as a potential challenge that you would have to navigate. The last thing I would say is, on the industry front, partners are ready, willing, excited, want to partner with the schools, but sometimes they face their own capacity barriers. So, if you ask them, oh, would you be able to host interns? They're like, oh, maybe one. So, I think that there's definitely things that come up where, as much as they're willing, they need help understanding how it fits into their world. And so, that's definitely an issue that you would have to navigate, even though you've got the, you've got the will, but you have to build people's capacity to actually partner in an effective way. So, all of these findings, I think, also inform just our recommendations and what, what we thought in terms of the viable pathways that Watertown could offer. And so, we base this on looking across your existing programs, and then also looking at labor market data, and looking at some of what we gathered around demand, and looking, and the way that these are at least ranked in this particular slide is showing like what we think has the highest viability. That's, this is not like a rigorous quantitative judgment, this is more of like a, I would say, something that the community should consider and continue to talk about. I would say any of these pathways could really be a strong potential for you to think about, whether it's building a life science pathway, building a computer science pathway, expanding on the engineering program to strengthen that pathway. Each one has trade-offs associated with it. And so, some of those are explored in the report, and I'm happy to talk more about that as well. I would say these content pathways are the what? So, like, what are we teaching, and how are we integrating across disciplines? The, the second piece, though, would be the structures, which I would call the how. Like, how are we actually doing a life science pathway that incorporates biotechnology? Well, we might do it through funding a Chapter 74, our Career and Technical Education pathway. So, that's more the programmatic structure, like, how are we going to fund it? What are we going to call it? How are we going to get approval from the state? You could also do that same life science or biotechnology pathway through applying for innovation pathway. That has a whole different set of standards, it looks a little bit different than Chapter 74. So, those are, but these are the main structures, is that you would begin to build out pathways that lead to high-wage, high-demand jobs, either through Chapter 74, through innovation pathway. I would also say another bigger one is a school within a school. This is one that you see often in bigger schools, where they may have an academy, so they may have a STEM academy, an early college academy. It's still, you could even do a career and technical academy. It's still within the same school, but it's a defined program that sort of has its own schedule, has its own staff, maybe, that is somewhat not shared across the other program. The challenge with doing this, I think, in your situation, and why I wouldn't necessarily lean to it, is just that it becomes very expensive, because you have overhead essentially for not quite two schools, but you're increasing your overhead, because you have to have sort of a program director, and all your staff may not be at the same capacity usage-wise. So, there are some trade-offs associated with that. With the Chapter 74, in the innovation pathway, I would say that those should not be explored in absence of a larger exploration for the whole high school. So, it wouldn't make sense just to be adding these pathways without thinking about, how do they fit together and creating opportunities for our students? Because otherwise, you'll get into the issue that I cited earlier, where you're spreading your enrollment across more and more programs. I think Laura was going to talk a little bit about more of the, actually, process for those two pathways.
Okay, so, just to kind of give you a general idea of the difference, there's two kind of pieces to the Perkins Law, which is a federal law. And it's just been kind of rewritten slightly. My understanding is that although it's been rewritten, Massachusetts already had higher standards for the implementation of the Perkins funding that is federal. So, there will actually be very little, if any, change seen in Massachusetts with the new Perkins Five, because it's already there, we were already there. So, Perkins, the Perkins Law in Massachusetts, the way that it's implemented is through the Chapter 74 and the Vocational Technical Education Regulations. There's two ways that Perkins funds programs, and currently, we're a Perkins program school, not a Chapter 74 school, but they're both from the same law. The Perkins programs require a two-course pathway, a minimum of two-course pathway. And when a student takes the second course in a pathway, then they're considered a Perkins student, and that's how we get funding through that. We don't get a huge amount of funding, but it does, you know, it helps, every little bit helps. Chapter 74 programs are more, they generally cost more to implement, because they have much more stringent requirements. They require 900 hours of instruction over a three-year period, and that does not include an exploratory. And you have to cover all six strands of the VTE frameworks very stringently. So, in order to, my understanding from the state and from my conversations with people is that it's easier to get a Chapter 74 pathway approved for a program that you've already had as a Perkins program, because you can show that there's enrollment and that there's, you know, need, and the students are looking for it. Let's see. So, if you choose to go to a Chapter 74 pathway, which is more lucrative in terms of the grant, you would get much more money in a pathway that's Chapter 74 than just the Perkins. It has to be driven by the regional labor market. You have to have done a study, which Carrie's already started, Carrie and Sarah, and you have to show that you have consulted with, and it can be a conference call, but they prefer in-person meetings with the Mass Regional Employment Board, the other school districts, which has already happened, the, including the vocational school districts. You have to, if, if the agricultural schools are applicable, and I'm not sure they would be in this case, post-secondary educational institutions, and other stakeholders, perhaps industry within your community. And if the program doesn't align with the priorities in what they call this blueprint that they have set out, which shows what the labor market is, then you may still be able to get it approved. And I'm going to give you an example that I heard about. So, we have a pretty robust television and radio program at the high school. We have a five-course pathway in that, and it's fairly popular among the students. And I've been told that over time, some of those programs have not been getting approved as Chapter 74 programs, because it's, it had been seen for a while as not being as relevant, not having as much in terms of the labor market. However, more programs are starting to get approved recently, primarily because those skills that the students are learning, the digital video-making, and the broadcasting, and podcasting, all of these things are being used by industry in, within each company. They have their own department that does all these things. Kids are making huge amounts of money doing podcasts and YouTube channels, and things that we would never have thought of a few years ago. When somebody told me that, you know, a 20-year-old is making a couple hundred thousand dollars doing a YouTube channel, I was blown away, but that's the reality of it. So, so there actually have been a couple of TV and radio programs approved recently in the state, I just wanted to let you know that, because of that bent, not because of the TV broadcasting like kind of focus. Let's see, so the timeline to apply for a Chapter 74 pathway, and each one has to be applied for independently, is, beginning in October, you have to have your intent to apply submitted, then there's a preliminary and a concluding application part, December and April, and then you get your final decision in June. And this seems, you can actually run your program if it gets approved that following September, however, that you may not get your final decision until November. It's a little odd, the way that they said that, but I, I think they would give you a good indication that you can go ahead and start this, because it's really, you, you just need to give us one more piece, and, and you'll be good to go. So, it takes a year, roughly, before you can get a program started. Innovation pathways are a little different. This is also a grant program with the state, it's not a federal program, it's a state program. And there was no specific information about approximately, you know, how much money you could get, but I looked up what the grants have been recently, and they're in the ballpark of $120,000 to $140,000 or $150,000 to implement an innovation pathway. I'm sure that depends on the equipment and the things that you need, the capital that you would need. So, they're designed to connect student learning to an industry sector, and that's a broad definition. The industry sector must be in demand, which is, you know, a real reason why this labor market study is important. It can lead students, or it should lead students to opportunities and meaningful careers, post-secondary education and training, but not necessarily, you know, college, or not necessarily career, it's, it's broader than that. And there are six core components, advising, market, labor market demand, integrated instruction, work-based learning, credentials. Credentials are workplace credentials, like, we currently have a program at the high school where students can learn Adobe software, so, completely, Adobe Creative Suite is the program that we have, and, and within that Photoshop is one of those. And so, students can actually learn Photoshop through the classes that they take, and then take a certification test that we offer through a company called CertiPort, and actually get a certificate. So, that's what they mean by credentialing. And then, post-secondary meaning industry and/or apprenticeships, and internships, and education. And then, this application has to be made with the school district and at least one other partner, either one employer, a group of employers, or the Workforce Development Board. We're members of the Metro North Workforce Employment Region. Here's the crazy timeline, sorry about that. Essentially, we, the preliminary application to put in innovation- Essentially, we, the preliminary application to put in innovation pathway in place for the 2020, the fall of 2020 school year, we would have had to put a preliminary application in last month. I'm not sure if we can continue, if we can still do that. I'd have to look into that further. And then over the school year, they provide you with whoever the leader is, they provide this leader with the information about how to continue with the application and how to get it all together, get the information from the labor market, get the partner, you know, you have to have a partner to apply for, for the intent to apply. And then you would be able to run the programs if we had met this first deadline by next fall.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
Actually, the preliminary application is not due till September 2019. They're just saying that it was posted in April.
Oh.
So it was posted in April. It is due in September 2019. There'll be some information sessions this summer. The intent to apply before you submit the preliminary application in September is in August. And so, but that's even optional, which is different from Chapter 74 where you have to submit the intent to apply.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
And that is it for me. So I'll just close out with a couple of recommendations and then happy to take questions. So I think the ones that I would focus on is what we started this presentation with, which the huge opportunity with the MSBA process to really think about a paralleling, actually an integrated design process that thinks about what's the high school learning environment? What is the profile of a Watertown High School graduate? And what are those key experiences along the way that students get to demonstrate their learning? And what are the different pathways they're traveling? And how are those connected to jobs and connected to, you know, their interests and passions that they want to explore? And how are they able to travel those pathways really flexibly? So kids at this pivotal time in high school get to not be bored and also get to explore what they're interested in, because they're about to make major investments coming out of high school, right? Whether it's investment in college, investment in post-secondary training for a job or a career they might pursue. So this is really such an exciting time for our students. But it's an exciting time for you as a community to think about what are the conditions you're creating for students to navigate that. And so I would really wholeheartedly encourage you to use that MSBA process to conduct a community conversation around like what the high school vision is and engage the community in design and think, engage them in thinking about how the labor market is changing. It's been incredible chance for me to interview folks from this community and hear just how people are really thinking a lot even about their own high school experience and whether that set them up for success. And people are thinking about how their, their child's high school experience could be different. So definitely use that experience. I would also say investing in teachers is going to be so critical to the success of any efforts to redesign learning. Teachers are the ones who design learning experiences. So getting them as many opportunities to be in industry, teachers should be doing externships over the summer. If I'm a biology teacher, I should be having an experience with one of the pharmaceutical companies or another lab here doing cutting-edge research on, you know, different therapies here in the city of Watertown. And then I should be bringing that back into my classroom. And you have some, there are definitely partners and people that can help set teachers up with those kinds of experiences. But I think it's really important to make sure that you're providing the resources for teachers to have those experiences and that they have a venue to then take what they've learned and redesign either a unit or some other type of experience for students. So I think that that's another thing I would highlight. The last is just to really start to build partnerships with some of the folks that we identified in the asset map that you may already know from your networks that are aligned and that can help you execute your vision. Because our plans for high school should no longer just be done by just the educators and the people that may show up at community meetings, but really need to dig deeper into the whole community to rethink what we're doing. So I'll leave you with that and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for your report and the analysis that you did, some interesting ideas, some important ideas for us to think about. Questions or comments from the committee? Anybody have any comments they want to make? Mark?
I just, not specifically to you, but to DeeDee, in the memo to us, it seems like you're going to create some type of a team to move forward, but it doesn't seem like we could meet any of these timelines for this coming year. Is that correct or?
I actually think that we should, sorry. I actually think that we should try to move forward quickly and, and put together a plan, whether it be, you know, and just because we apply for a Chapter 74 program doesn't mean we're going to get it. But I think if we don't try, then we're never going to know what direction we need to go in. So I certainly think that we've got some recommendations here that we can work towards in the interim, meaning, you know, we're going to do visioning for the high school in the fall. And, you know, I think that we could do this process concurrently with the visioning for the high school, just to make sure that, I, I see the, the work that we've got here is, is yes, we need to do something immediate to figure out if we can meet these timelines, but this is something that's going to take, I mean, it's going to be years. Because what our goal is, no matter what, when we open the doors of the new high school, our teachers are prepared, our students are ready, so it's not like we have to have that learning curve of that new high school. So I think in short term, yes, I'd love to be able to get something together that, that integrates, like we talked about, already existing things that we have within our school and see where we can go. And then long term is really how are we going to redesign high school?
Yes. Mark? I, I do think that the first bullet point here is leveraging the MSBA as we work through our process is a key one. Because I, I also believe that maybe there are services we can provide, we, there's, that we don't need to send students to Minuteman. And I still firmly believe that unless somebody like the gentleman that was at Morehouse State yesterday is going to pay college tuitions for children, it's becoming, it becoming more and more unaffordable for some families. And we, it, we have an obligation to give the students another path, and I think we can keep some of that in-house. So I think this is a great opportunity for us, but it's going to take a lot of work.
Yep. If I could just add, one of the things, I mean, because we could probably talk hours about this, so we know that we have a timeline. But one of the, I would just like to comment that this, this opportunity was actually funded through the Bar Foundation, so we did not have to pay for this, this endeavor. But the next step would be to do a community design team, which would be broad-based, that would really go deep with the recommendations from the report, which is what I would think our next steps will be. So, and that would also be potentially funded. Seize the opportunities when they come at you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Other comments? Eileen?
Well, I think it's great to leverage the MSBA process. I think just as we were saying, we have to serve the current students, so the building has to stay in good shape while we're waiting for the new building and so on. I don't think we should necessarily assume that we can depend on the MSBA process to help us do the thinking on this. So I would be very enthusiastic about our getting started, starting with your ad hoc committee or whatever. I think this is important thinking, and we already have some of the pieces of this, which is a great beginning. And I think if we showed that we had something, we might be able to attract local businesses to help us. They don't want to think it through with us. They want us to come to them and say, can you do this for us?
Other comments? Yes. No, I, I just want to kind of reinforce those comments that are being made. So I think this is a, the, the timing of your study is, is very good for us, because we're, we're going to start the feasibility study at some point, late summer into the fall with the MSBA. And as, as has been noted, one of the first things we have to do is an educational plan. And so this dovetails with that. And I think it goes beyond, you know, the vocational, technical, career education, but I think it looks at the entire, we, we're going to be looking at the entire high school in terms of how we want to organize the high school in the best way possible. And I think you, I think your report's very interesting. I particularly liked, you know, the, towards the end where you, you talked about the kind of content pathways and, and then the kind of the, the structure of how different options, the innovation, Chapter 74, et cetera. Lots of food for thought there.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I will be picking up on that. And I think as DeeDee said, probably the Chapter 74, we have the elements of a couple of those already that we can kind of build up and move forward with that. But then I think there's a broader conversation about, that's going to touch on all parts of the high school, which I think is very exciting.
Yeah, I would just add, I do think, you know, to your point, Eileen, about not, let's not, the MSBA process is a long process. So you can't be like, we just want to wait, we're waiting for four years, you know, or we're going to go on a, a slow four-year community conversation about what we want the high school to be. Yes, that may be happening, but you also have this opportunity to test out real things and see what it would look like to do different aspects of your program differently. So doing Chapter 74, maybe, you know, establishing one of your current programs, whether it's the radio and TV broadcasting, or whether it's leveraging engineering and say, hey, we're going to go, we're going to apply for Chapter 74. Because whether you get it or not, it's, what will be good about that is that you are building, one, your ability to like successfully go and apply and rethink how, what the impact of the schedule would be. Like all of that is going to be good learning for the educators to think through, what would it mean for us to hour this, offer this 900 hours? Which is a lot different than having kids take two courses in a pathway. Right now, a lot of your programming like that is offered more in an elective format. So this is a much different way of providing a learning experience, and that's really good experience for a group of educators to see what that would be like. And for your principal to under, you know, her to go through that experience. She has CTE experience, so she knows, which is a great asset to you all. But for everybody to experience that together and then to bring in the industry partners. So through Chapter 74, you have to have a board of industry partners. And there are definitely engineering firms here that, in Watertown, that would be interested in partnering with you. And you could really tell them what you need from them and how they can be part of it. But all of that is going to serve you well when you get to the point where you're like ready to relaunch a high school that looks a lot differently. So definitely encourage you to pick out those spots where you can test things and get groups together to really build out new programs, because that will be advantageous in the long run.
Okay. Again, thank you very much. And school committee, we will have more conversations on this as we go forward.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We, we move to action items next. If you don't, if there's no objection from the school committee, I will, I want to move the public forum up. We have a guest here who, you're very patient. I wouldn't, we didn't let you speak before, but if you want to speak now, I'll let you do that.
So to bear with me, I wasn't really prepared to speak, but for the best I could. So my name is Lauren Hegarty-Tatry. I worked at the middle school in many different capacities in years past. I'm currently an eighth grade teacher in Chelsea at the Brown Middle School. I also have two children in the district. My son Daniel will be graduating from eighth grade or moving on. And I have a daughter that is a junior at the high school as well. It's been brought to my attention that there's discussion at the middle school to do away with humanities program. For those of you that aren't familiar with that program, in seventh and eighth grade, ELA and history are delivered in a block schedule. So this avails, well, is it, I feel like taking ELA and history out of a block schedule is really not what's best for kids. A block schedule, as you may know, those of you in education, avails for opportunities for writing. As Eileen Subalzer said earlier, it's really important that kids learn how to write. Block scheduling allows for that. These kids are in a class for 90 minutes with the same teacher, with ideally 20 to 25 kids every day, where they're given time and space to do writing. A neighbor of mine who has a son that abhorred writing for a lot of different reasons, going into seventh grade and eighth grade, he had opportunities with time and space to learn how to write. He loved history, he hated English, but bringing them together avails for a lot of wonderful learning opportunities, such as going down the Nile River, seeing a slideshow, seeing the Giza pyramids here, seeing the Sphinx over here, and having your teacher spraying water on you to simulate going down the Nile. These are learning opportunities that I feel are going to be missed if we take away this humanities program. I am unclear why these decisions were made. I hope the opportunity is still there for conversation, but I feel like this is not going in the direction, as I think Carrie Donahue had spoken about, about thematic units. That's happening right now in seventh grade, it's happening in eighth grade. And I feel like it is a detriment to our kids' learning if we take those opportunities Again, I am very thankful for the education my kids got at the middle school. My daughter writes quite well. I attribute that to seventh and eighth grade. My son came home and spoke about a unit, a thematic unit that he did on water, where they studied 19th century water issues in Boston using primary sources, as well as connected it to what's going on in Flint, Michigan. I think those opportunities are going to be missed if we do not continue with the humanities model. Thematic units are progressive. Delivering them separately is a junior high model. That is not being progressive.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. No, typically we don't respond in public forums, but all I, all I want to say is just that, I, I don't think there's, you said eliminate the humanities. I don't think that that's the intent. I think there's, is some discussion about kind of restructuring of what it's going to look like. But absolutely, you know, integration across social studies and English is still very important. And I think there's just a variety of discussions going on about how that's going to be done. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
But again, the, the block scheduling allows for more feedback in writing.
Right.
And as a teacher that has 140 kids, really would love to have a block schedule. I don't have that at my school. This allows for a teacher to have 60, 70 kids. That's a little bit more manageable if you want to have good feedback in teaching kids how to write.
All right.
So I thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So let me go back to the action items. The first action item is the school calendar, 2019-20 school calendar. And we have it in our packets along with a, a brief kind of memo from the superintendent. I'll turn it over to Dr. Galston.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't know, Dr. McGinnis, do you want to speak about this or do you want me to speak about this? I'll, I'll do it. We didn't rehearse this in advance. So just what you have is the, the final draft of the school calendar. One of the things that happened in the interim between the first time that we presented this to you and today, is there was some continued conversation about when the evening conferences should be in relation to the early releases. We did a survey of staff to figure out where they, what their preference, we, we had heard from staff that having them on the same day was, was a preference for, for many. But then we heard that maybe that wasn't the case, so we did a survey. And the long and the short of it is that our middle school teachers much preferred to have the early release and the evening conferences on the same day, whereas our elementaries preferred to have the conference of the evening conferences before the early release. So we have kind of a two-different approach to that. So that was just to accommodate the wishes of our teachers and, you know, we're going to see how that goes. But I think that we did give our teachers a chance to weigh in on that. So that's one change. The second thing that I'm advocating for at this point is doing a low attendance day. That low attendance early release, sorry, not a day off, an early release. That low attendance early release would correspond with Good Friday. I know there was a lot of discussion at the school committee level around having school on Good Friday, which, you know, absolutely 100% supports. But what we determined over, we didn't have Good Friday during school this year, we had it the previous year. And, you know, I did an analysis of potentially what was the impact on, on faculty and staff. I did end up, on, on the Good Friday of 2018, which was March 30th, I ended up having to deny 23 staff members a Religious Observance Day, which, you know, doesn't feel great to be able to have to do that. But I, I felt in that moment that I would not be able to really run school with 86 staff members not being present. So I think a, a good compromise solution for that would be to have an early release that day. That would honor, you know, people attending services, you know, usually would start at 3:00 PM. And if you live far away, then you'd be able to leave at that early release time and make it to those services. So again, I, I approached this as more of not, not in any way trying to, to favor one religion over another, but just simply the, the facts of trying to run school and making sure that we have enough staff present to do that. So I gave you a breakdown of the major Jewish holidays and the staff numbers that were out for those days. We are certainly able to maintain school on those days, so we don't feel that we need to move directly into the place of having all those days off. But I do think that this would have a very good positive impact for that, that Good Friday day.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the calendar?
Sure.
Second, discussion? Questions? Comments? Discussion? Second, discussion? Questions, comments, discussion on the calendar? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it. All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the policy subcommittee, and we're going back to, this is our kind of final look, if you will, at the policy manual. And as we all know, we've spent a number of meetings going through, kind of one by one, looking at the various policies, and we have in front of you is on the screen also, all the different sections of the policy manual. And we have gone through and essentially approved each section, although we've kept a couple that are on hold. By our count here, I think there are three that are still on hold, and we can, I think the suggestion from Eileen, the chair of the committee, was to vote again for the entire manual with the exception of those three as a final step.
Right, it's not three sections that are on hold, it's three policies within the section. So there's, there are always going to be policies that are under consideration, so you never get to a point where there's nothing to discuss.
Right. Do you have any other comments you want to make in terms of?
No, I do want to say that this subcommittee has worked long and hard, worked through the summer with quite a good schedule, and has been really, really flexible about meeting, because we've had to incorporate a lot of different people, including we've met on Fridays, which is virtually verboten in the school system. So I, I do appreciate it, and I want to thank them. They were, they've been tremendous.
Yeah, no, thanks to you, Eileen, for chairing it, and Amy for serving on that, and Lily also. A lot of work. It's something that we do about every 10 years or thereabouts. So we appreciate that very much. So there are three, by our count, there are three that are kind of on hold, tabled, if you will. DKC, which deals with school committee reimbursement. JFABB, which is the Foreign Exchange Students. We have had some discussion about that, but I think we still want to look at the language on that a little bit. And then IJNDD, which is on social media. So what we'd look for, a motion to approve the policy manual with the exception of those three individual policies.
I would make that motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, thanks, thank you very much. Next, so related to that is this issue of hosting the online manual by MASC. And we had some discussion about this a couple of meetings ago. We've received some information on it. MASC does this for, what's the count now, about 80 or so school committees, I think they said?
They said 85.
Eighty-five school committees that they do this. They post it online through their website. It's linked to our website. We, we, you can click to, go to our website and link to it. And they keep it up to date. They also maintain the references to state law. As those state law changes, they make sure that that's all updated in the context of our policies.
Which happens quite often, and we don't, my understanding is, we don't have the staff capacity to be constantly making those changes and to keep up.
Yeah, we can kind of, I think we can make changes on our end of policies we make, but when state law changes, we're not tracking that
Right.
in any particular way. And so state law can actually change, and it, it will change the references that are required, connected to our policies, and we wouldn't typically know that. So, the question, so we have a contract before us that we also looked at briefly before, that would, that we would sign as, as, if we were to go down this road of having them host it. There's a charge, initial charge, the basic setup charge is $3,500. You're going to get everything set up, and then there's an annual fee after that of $950 to maintain it. Those are the, that's the financial piece to it. I know people raised a few other questions, and there was an email from Dorothy Presser, I forwarded that to people, it answered a few of those questions. So, let me, is there a motion, do you want to make some questions?
No, I'd make a motion to have MASC host the policy manual.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Mark?
One of the issues that I'm a little concerned about is the exceeding the 600 pages, and we seem to regularly, as we were going through this, have 150, 180 pages. Do we figure out approximately?
Well, actually, Dorothy answers that, first, no district has ever been charged for exceeding 650 pages, and that currently, our manual would come in at 500 pages.
That's fine.
So we're okay on that?
Yes.
I just wanted to also address that Dorothy had also addressed the copyright clause, which people had been concerned about, and it clearly states that the only online version, if you were to discontinue the hosting, the district gets a printout and it is your manual. And so, I mean, I feel like she really hit up a lot of what our concerns were, and kind of addressed those in a way that is going to make us all feel more comfortable about this great service to keep it updated.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I just want to say that I'm much more comfortable with this now, having the additional information. How many cities and towns are doing this?
Yep.
And I think it's, it's important that we sign on to this, so I will be supporting this this evening.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? So the motion's been made to authorize this contract to move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, thank you very much. Next item is the, from the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Again, this was on the agenda before. We didn't have all the documentation we needed. It's, we're dealing with the fee structure for the use of school buildings. And so, school committee members received in their packets a document that this finance committee went through. Also, buildings and grounds had some discussion about it, but the main point of it is to, it creates several different classes of users, and then has various fee structure. Let me ask Kendra if she wants to speak to this as the chair of the committee.
Yes, so we, I introduced the minutes from the meeting last time. There, before, before we have a motion to, to approve this, though, there's actually a few words that I wanted to strike, and I did review them with Heidi beforehand. So if I can just get your attention on the Class II description, there's a few things that just made it a bit confusing that I wanted to clarify. In the second sentence, it says, "In classrooms, there is no custodial charge for Class II organizations when programs or activities take place in classrooms." It's not just in classrooms, it's anywhere in the, in the school, so the gyms or cafeterias, wherever that is. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion to strike the words "in classrooms," and then the last, go ahead. Oh, it's Class II in the second sentence?
Under custodial charges.
Under custodial charge.
Sorry, that was not clear.
Page 75 on the
Oh, no, I'm on the right page. Yes. I'm reading it first, but second, it's not the first paragraph.
Okay.
Sorry, I gave you the wrong instructions, the wrong paragraph. The, the other sentence, and this is just for clarity, I wanted to
What would you change it to?
I would just strike the word "in classrooms."
Oh, okay.
Because that is not accurate. Then the other, there's one sentence also in that same paragraph that I would recommend making a motion to strike. It is in the middle, it says, "A minimum one-hour custodial charge will always apply for use of a cafeteria, gymnasium, or the middle school and high school auditoriums during the week when a custodian is already there. We do not have that one-hour charge, so I just don't want that confusion if someone is renting the, one of the spaces during the week." So, those are the two sentences that, or the two sections that I would recommend we strike before we
Would you strike the whole sentence?
I would strike the whole sentence.
The one that says, "A minimum one-hour custodial?"
Yes.
Because that doesn't apply.
It doesn't apply.
Okay.
It only applies on the weekends, and that's, that's clear in other parts of this, and I just don't want there to be confusion.
So, is it, this is, is it not the case that if a custodian has already cleaned an area and has to go back and clean it after the rental is over, that we would have to charge for that time? I want to make it clear that how you leave the space is considered part of the rental. I know it lists cleanup, but I think it's easy to skip over that. If the custodian has to go back and clean up after you, even if he's already cleaned that area, that's an additional time.
Yes, no, that's a really good point, and there is language in there about requirements for custodians, if it's over a certain number of people, if it includes food, so, and it, so there, it does include
But I wonder if we should specifically say, address condition in which the space is left. I don't want it to be somebody's judgment call. I want it to be the school department's judgment call as to whether or not the custodian is required.
Well, we would have to have brought an extra custodian in prior to the rental. I don't know, I guess I'd like to ask Heidi, get your thoughts on that.
Some renters are very good, and some of them just do not supervise.
You know, when Kendra and I were talking about it, if we got an overtime slip for the custodians, for instance, if they had to be pulled off of what's called their run, which is what they're assigned to do during their shift, if they had to be pulled off of their run and ended up working overtime, or if there was consistently happening and they said they couldn't, you know, take care of it without working overtime, then if we got overtime payroll sheets, then we would just tack that on.
Is that clear in the contract to the person who's filling it out? I think there's another thing that happens too, which is, some renters, not all renters, that by any means, they have something going on, and people bring their little kids or whatever, and they let them just run through the building, and that's, that creates a whole other problem.
Yeah, no, there's, there's one sentence, and hopefully this will clarify that point. It is in the third sentence, "Under custodial charges in Class II," it says, "No custodial charges assume that no custodial services are required, including but not limited to setup, breakdown, cleanup, trash removal, and other associated support to the rental." So I, I think that's enough language to say that there will be custodial services required if that is necessary, but it's a good point.
Yeah, when we talked about that, we would just interpret that to mean that we would charge them if custodial services, in our determination, are required.
For any of those.
And the immediate following sentence said it will be a minimum of one hour. So if a custodian does have to go in there for 15 minutes, we're not going to, you know, prorate time to 10 minutes or 15 minutes. If the group says, oh, they only came in for 10 minutes, it still will be, if they go in and they have to do extra work, it's going to be a minimum one hour. So hopefully that will incentivize these groups to take care of things themselves.
Okay, I wondered if we could add something like, "No custodial charges assume that no custodial services are required by the, by the district," or something, that we're the ones who decide. It's not that they said, "I'd like you to come in after us and empty out these trash barrels." It's our decision whether that has to happen.
So maybe adding in "required" as decided by the district.
Right.
Okay, any, any other changes? Do you have one other, Kendra, or?
Nope.
Okay.
I just want to thank Kendra and Heidi for working on this. It's been a long process. We've all taken a little stab at it, but to make sure that our, all our school and town departments, the nonprofit groups, the record department, and all the other organizations, we're all being treated fairly, and we really took a lot of time to making sure that this worked for our community. So I'm really thankful for you guys and the time. So thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the fee structure?
Sure moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other questions, comments to the document? Yes, Lindsay?
I'm just not going to vote on it.
Oh, right, you recuse yourself, that's right. Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, thank you very much. So, that's approved. Fine.
Will this be on our website so that groups which, who are thinking of possibly renting can access it easily?
Yes. Yes, right.
And if I could add that, we, we will have it on the website, but additionally, when we have time, which will probably be over the summer, there's a software program that we'll use for people to put in their requests to rent. There'll be a lot of questions built in, they have to answer what their needs are, and then they'll get actually issued a permit, which we don't do now, but once they're approved, they will be emailed a permit that says that they're, you know, they've met all the requirements of insurance and everything else, so work it on that.
All right, thank you.
Can I just, have a quick question?
Sure.
Just for people who are interested in applying for that in the public to know, when does the district expect that to be up and running, and how will people find out that it is?
We would notify all of the renters that we have records for over the last year. Additionally, they, it will be linked on our website. I can't say when we'll be ready, because we have several other huge lifts this summer with new, rolling out the online payment system and other things too. This is a little bit, you know, after that probably, so we're hoping to have it by the end of the summer.
Next item on the agenda is the schedule for summer meetings. So this is a one-page document that I circulated as a draft, that talks, goes from next June, our next meeting, June 3rd, and identif, puts forward a schedule of, of meeting dates, take us to September 9th. And a couple of things, I just make a comment here, that every summer, one of the things that we do over the summer, it's kind of a, it's the end of the one fiscal year, the start to the next, and end of the calendar year, school year. So, one important activity we take place is evaluating the superintendent, and then setting goals for the coming year. So that has, that needs to be built into the schedule. Some opportunities for discussion ourselves about goals that we might have, and then dealing with various kinds of issues that come up over the summer. I will say that the one dates that are not going to work is the third category of a retreat, June 24, 26, 27. Those dates aren't going to work. I just got an email from Dorothy about alternative dates, which would be the following week, which, following week and the week after that. Following week, I think, is July 4th week, so there may be a couple of possibilities there, but maybe not, and then I asked for some dates in the following week before, after that. So I will, I will send around an email with those dates and get your availability. Any other questions or comments on the proposed schedule? Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Oh, yeah, sorry.
The calendar
Second.
with the changes that you've outlined.
Second.
Yeah, change for that retreat. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Other items here, under action, we have the disposition of surplus property.
I make a motion that we approve the disposition of surplus property.
And if I could add to that list? 14 lockers from the middle school.
Second.
No longer need, if I could add to the list.
Second added to that, with that added to the list, yes.
Was the maker of the motion okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Not sure if that is okay under the open meeting law, though, because it's not listed.
It's not listed. Well, we could, we can amend the mo-
Just
Well, it's, it's, we can amend a document that's in front of us, right? I think we can do that.
I'd still say we approve it.
Okay.
But
I will do that. I think we'll be okay. So there's a motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next, we also have a list of gifts to the district. I'll read off a few of them. The $500 from Sons of Italy lodged for a scholarship. $751 from the Hosmer PTO for field trips. $1,236 from Friends of Watertown Music for two scholarships for the Performing Arts New York City trip. $500 from the Hayward Garden, Hayward Garden Design for the John Hayward Scholarship. $1,503 from the Lowell PTO for a variety of activities at the Lowell. We have an in-kind contribution from Histogenics Corporation of a whole variety of furniture, I think it's primarily for the Lowell School. So thank you to them. And then we have 11, I won't read them all, but 11 different contributions, gifts totaling $3,500 to the Allison Donovan Memorial Donation. So is there a motion to approve?
Sure moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next is the minutes, approval of the minutes from the school committee meeting from May 6th. Is there a motion?
I make a motion-
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of May 6th.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving to reports, building for the future, the elementary school project.
Thank you. We met again last week to re-interview, to do a second interview with owner's project manager firms for the elementary schools project, and we took a sense of the committee vote to move forward with Hill as our owner's project manager. I've had several conversations with them, and, as well as Mr. Dunlap. They are already beginning their meetings, which will begin on Wednesday, to go over where we are. They're excited. It's an exciting time for the schools, because that's another added value for us to keep this project moving forward. Last Tuesday evening here, the town council voted to appropriate 12-plus million dollars for the design services as we move through this project for all three schools. So that's another positive. And I anticipate on June 5th, when we put on the agenda confirming the owner's project manager, that we will have a positive vote on that. I'm working with them on their potential contract, which will be sent to the town's attorney for review, and we'll go from there. That's my update at this point on.
All right.
The elementary schools.
Thank you very much. Again, a big thanks to the town council and town manager for that support with the 12 million dollars to take the next step. Very important. Of the high school project, Dr. Galston.
Excellent. So as I reported the last time, we actually have appointed the OPM for the high school project, which is Compass Project Management, which is very exciting. So right now, the next step is to begin the designer selection process. It's looking potentially that we might be able to go in front of the designer selection panel either the first week of August or the third week of August. So that all depends on, you know, how quickly we move through the process, but that certainly is within the realm of possibility. So that's where we're at with the high school project at this point.
All right. Thank you very much. School committee chair, I'll just make a brief comment. Dr. Galston and I did a presentation a week ago at a forum put together by our Senator Will Brownsberger, along with Senator Jason Lewis. It was a forum from, focused on local school funding, and was from the districts that are, the school districts that are in Senator Brownsberger's district, which, his Senate district, which includes Belmont, Watertown, and Boston. So Dr. Galston and I made a presentation on Watertown, and, you know, I will say, coming after Boston, it's, as I, as I said the other day, you know, and they, they talk about their $1.3 billion budget, and we're, you know, a little less than that, a little less than that. But it was very interesting, and I, the one takeaway that I mentioned the other day as well, the one takeaway that I think is important was, you know, is the, the commitment, which we emphasized, the commitment and the support that this community makes for, for education. And it shows up in the support for our operating budget, and it shows up also in the support for the, the capital projects with the elementary and the high school. And compared to, Boston and Belmont were both kind of complaining about this, that, and the other thing, and we were almost feeling guilty that gee, we, you know, we got a lot of support here. And, you know, they were, they had more Chapter 70 issues that they focused on. And we talked about some of the challenges we have on the budget side with, with vocational Minuteman, with special education, et cetera, but, circuit breaker, but, you know, I think we, we're very fortunate to be in a community that has so much support. And then one other comment I would make, the school committee, we, Mark didn't mention this, but tomorrow evening is one of the budget hearings for the town council, and it's probably the last one, I suspect? Maybe not?
There's one more, there's some, the town attorney will be the following week.
Okay. And the school department is presenting its budget tomorrow evening here in this chamber, starting at 6 o'clock, I believe.
Yeah, the school department will be a little bit later than that.
Okay, a little bit later than that. Okay. But we will, we'll be here tomorrow. Superintendent's report. Did I take away one of your reports?
You did, but that's okay, 'cause that always happens that way. I'm glad I go second. So just, just a couple of updates. Recently, and just today even, in the news is a discussion of the seal of bili literacy, which is actually, it's across the nation. This, it's a way to recognize our students who are bilingual, so either they're bilingual or at least have the ability to communicate in a language other than English. So we, as a district, certainly support the movement towards providing our graduates with the seal of bili literacy on their diploma. That would not take in, in effect until the class of 2020. Certainly, that is something that we're working towards. In essence, students just have to demonstrate their proficiency on the MCAS for English, and then they need to be at the advanced low rating for the actual guidelines for world language, and most of our students who take the four years of language would be able to achieve that as well. So I think for us here in Watertown, with our emphasis on, you know, global competency and promoting languages and bilingualism, this is certainly right, exactly what we should be doing. So that is something that we are moving forward with, and we will share with you all the details once it becomes official. Then other than that, I mean, I have a superintendent's coffee coming up on Tuesday, May the 28th, deviation from dates. So Tuesday, 9:00 AM was my first coffee at, in the Phillips Administration Building, and then once again at 7:00 PM, we'll be meeting anybody who would like to ask questions, give feedback. I'm more than happy to, to be there and listen and to provide information about our schools. The anti-bias coalition will also be meeting on June 10th. That is something that I sent out to the community, just anybody who wants to be part of a process to, you know, reduce bias or end bias within our community, I certainly invite community members, parents, students, whoever wants to be part of that, June 10th is our next meeting. So that's what I have to share.
All right. Thank you very much. New business? Any new business? Seen none. Announcements, next Monday's Memorial Day, no school, parade at noon, correct, usually?
Yes.
Parade is at 12 o'clock?
All are welcome.
Pardon?
All are welcome.
All are welcome, on Mount Auburn Street. Superintendent already mentioned her coffee. The school, next school committee meeting is June 3rd in this chamber. And public, public forum, I think we already moved up. So motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for coming.[1050.41]